Hi Chip, hi Jeff. Hi Karen.
Hello Jeff, hello Karen.
Hello.
How are you guys?
Uh, so. I'm actually cold.
What's going on at your house? You're freezing over there all the time.
Well, you know, I live down a little hill and I think the cold water goes down the little hill.
Okay, for those members of the public who are joining the meeting, if you would just remember to keep your devices muted until the mayor has called on you to speak. If you are looking for the meeting on the city's website, if you go under government and click on meetings, if you scroll down to December 15th, there is a red camera icon, click on that and that is the web streaming. You can also search for City of Carmel by the Sea YouTube.
We're broadcasting these meetings on YouTube now?
We're giving it a shot, yes sir.
Thank you, that's great.
It gives us a backup so that what happened last week, we might be protected if that happens again.
The Water Board is switching from WebEx to Zoom. WebEx was a little complicated.
Yeah, I imagine there's a lot of people trying different platforms and making adjustments since this doesn't appear to be ending soon.
No. Hey Carrie.
Hi, good evening everybody.
Good to see you.
Nice to be here. Hello.
Hi.
Hello.
When we want to talk, do you always use the little raise the hand icon at the bottom or just do this? What do you want?
Either one works fine. Britt, you're kind of the keeper of the conduct with the public. I can see what if you guys want to raise your hand or that's probably the easiest, just wave. It's been working pretty well in the past.
Yeah, I think that's been working. And then if you happen to not notice, one of the council members, I have kind of tried to steer you.
Exactly. I'm one of those rare men who doesn't mind being told what to do. By certain people.
I like it.
I'll remember that.
Within reason, Karen.
Please don't let guests work out.
You know, you used a phrase the other day, Dave, that I've heard a little differently. It was, "Behind every great man is this surprised woman."
In my case, it certainly, she's in front of me. She's about to open a hotel tomorrow.
Really?
Yeah, which is kind of shocking.
Wow.
Yeah. Got like four people checked in or something.
You're like, "Shut up."
It's not good. Not good at all.
No, Carrie, you know. Lots of international travels are pretty devastating.
We have interna- I don't, I don't.
I said loss of.
Loss of, yes, absolutely. Absolutely.
I was trying to go skiing against Squaw Valley, he's not taking any reservations.
Oh really?
Yeah. You can only go there for the day.
Wow.
Well, non-essential. I guess skiing is not considered essential.
Well, skiing would be recreational, but I guess staying over is not essential. I don't know. Unless you got snowed in or something. We are expecting more rain tomorrow night evidently.
Yeah. So Britt, it does appear we have a quorum, don't we? Is everybody here?
Yes, everyone is here, it looks like.
Well, my phone slash clock says it is 4:30. It appears to be December 15th, 2020. We most certainly are Carmel by the Sea City Council here for a special meeting. So Britt, could we get a roll call? That'd be lovely.
Right. Councilmember Barron?
Here.
For Lino?
Here.
Tyce?
Here.
Mayor Portem Richard?
Here.
Mayor Potter?
Here.
Hey, we have a quorum.
All right, thank you all. So first item on the agenda is the public appearance item. This is an opportunity for any member of the public to speak on an item that is not on tonight's agenda. It's three-minute limitation on that testimony. If you'd state your name for the record, I would appreciate it. Britt, does it appear that there's anybody wishing to speak?
I would like to speak.
Okay. Go ahead, state your name please. You have three minutes.
All right. It's Joe Todd.
Hey, go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. In keeping with this holiday season, I'd like to offer this to you. Oh Hanukkah, oh Hanukkah, come light the menorah. Let's have a party, we'll all dance the hora. Gather on a table, we'll give you a treat. Svevo nim to play with, levivo to eat. Mary, did you know that your baby boy would one day walk on water? Mary, did you know that your baby boy would save our sons and daughters? Did you know that your baby boy has come to make you new? This child that you've delivered will soon deliver you. Blue hawa rose, they're blooming from tender stem, as strong. Love Jesse's lineage coming, as saints of old had sung, it came a flower at bright. Amidst the cold of winter, when absence was a night. Blue hawa rose, they're blooming from tender stem, as strong. Thank you. A joyous holiday to you all. Joe Todd, Carmel.
Joe, thank you very much. We missed you. Thank you. Very nicely done.
You're welcome.
Hi, my name's Teresa Holman. I'd like to speak.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Teresa Holman.
All right, Teresa, go ahead.
I'd just like to introduce myself. I'm part of the Chamber of Commerce First Leadership Carmel class and I'm just here to listen and to partake in this meeting and I just wanted to introduce myself in person.
Welcome, thank you.
This is a reminder to everyone who are waiting to speak or are just listening to the meeting to please keep your devices muted. Is there anybody else who would like to address the city council at this time? Mayor, it looks like you might be clear.
All right, we want to close the public comment period with that notification. Move on then to announcements.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to speak.
All righty.
Hello, it's Parker Logan.
Hi Parker, go ahead.
Thank you. Got a few things, I'll try to wrap it up. I only have a few minutes, right?
You only have three, Parker, and this is on items that are not on tonight's agenda.
Okay. I'd just like a call for the City of Carmel by the Sea to just not enforce this curfew and not enforce this stay-at-home order. And let's, let's be on a, on a, on a different side of, of the coin here. We have such low cases in our community and we've been inviting people into our community and stuffing hotels and, and, and we don't have, you know, our neighbors aren't dying. We're, we're very safe and we, and we have an eclectic group of travelers that get here. So let's just end all that. I read in the paper that Marnie would like to have all businesses shut at the same time. This is a new issue. That is absolutely preposterous. All different businesses, you know, we attract different demographics, we have different customer bases and it would certainly give an unfair business advantage for some versus the others. If you are going to shut us down, then I think that you should put a moratorium on all landlords that they cannot accept rent because all these restaurants and wine tasting rooms and drinking establishments still have to pay it. Why about we turn the suffering on to somebody else and then, and make it so we don't have to pay it back and it's just forgiven until we are reopened, if that's the route that this goes. And one other thing, the, the little thing with the mutt mits and the, and the sponsorship. I mean, it's kind of a cute idea, but I just hope it doesn't fall into, the next thing we go, we've got, you know, realtors' names on, on bus stops and I mean, where's it going to end where we're asking for the public to pay for things so they can put their little special logos on things? I think it's tacky. I think it's against what our city is about, the traditions that we uphold. So, that's all I have to say for now. I'm sure I'll get to speak again later.
Thank you, Parker. Next speaker. All right, I'm going to try to close this again on that holiday note. Again, this will close the public part, public appearance items for tonight and move on then to the city attorney's report. Brian, was there anything of substance to report out of closed session?
There was no reportable action. We did have a closed session on December 7th. It was under real estate negotiations and the negotiations were with the Sunset Cultural Center regarding the Forest Theater lease and there was no reportable action out of that meeting.
Thank you, Brian. That moves us on then to orders of business tonight. This brings us back to what we were interrupted in last week when we were about to go ahead and take some definitive actions and provide some direction. Been a little bit of changed circumstance since, so Chip, would you like to kind of preface this update and then we'll go back to square one. We'll start over again so we don't have to have the allegation that we left out something, so.
Yes, I think that's a great plan, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. And I think your characterization of, of changed circumstances is, is very, very appropriate. You know, the, the, one of the, one of the few good things I think that's come out of the, the most recent order by Monterey County Health is the fact that the council did not make a decision or any decisions or direction on outdoor seating. And therefore tonight you have, you have, I guess you can call it the benefit, the benefit of the information that that's come down from, from this, from the state through the county with, with the revised shelter-in-place order. And the most significant element of that, of course, germane to this item, is that the county is now prohibiting any, any, any gathering in restaurants, whether it's certainly be inside, which is, has been the case since the beginning of the pandemic. And they've also now prohibited the gathering in outdoor seating areas. And just as a refresher, under my authority, we've approved a litany of, of outdoor seating areas under my authority regarding the encroachment permit process. A reminder to everyone that those are, those are entirely revocable. We can remove them at any time. We can obligate the restaurateur to remove them at any time. They are regulated by the, by the city, by the city council. And that said, and I know there are some questions about how much time we spent vis-à-vis enforcement and trying to monitor and reapprove and reapprove and reapprove these outdoor seating areas. And we can, we can answer that. But the vision behind the approval of these outdoor seating areas that, and we, and we've taken some, we've taken some, some punches to the face from members of the public, both within the village and, and outside as well, was to try to have some semblance of, of, I'm not going to call it economic normalcy, but, but try to have some vestige of economic opportunity in the restaurants and really to help those in our society, our community that are most vulnerable, i.e. the wait people, the people that are washing the dishes, the people who are cooking the food in these outdoor seating areas. So, so one of the, one of the newest questions for you tonight is, given the new shelter-in-place order, what would the council like to do with, with these outdoor seating areas that, that again, I've approved under, under, under my emergency authority, under the encroachment permit process? You do have a, a determination by the city attorney's office that was, I believe, just sent to you just a short while ago and Mr. Pyrick can speak to that. But one, again, the, one of the most germane questions to you during the next, until, until January 11th, with, which is the current time when, when the current order is, is identified to be lifted is, what do we want to do with these outdoor seating areas? I.e. should we obligate the restaurateurs to remove their tables and chairs and/or the platforms that they've invested in? Or allow them to stay? And, and then the next question, of course, is if you were going to allow the tables and chairs to stay, can we allow this notion of picnicking? Right now, the only thing that the restaurants can provide is food to go. That means that my family and I can get, order food either in person, on, on the phone, or electronically from any of the fine restaurants in Carmel and we can, we can trundle down to the beach and we can enjoy our food there. We can go to Piccadilly Park, we can go to Mission Trail Nature Preserve, we can go to Devendorf Park. And so the council's determination on, on how or whether that differs from enjoying that food in one of these parklets, you know, I hate the word, but, but in these outdoor seating areas in front of restaurants is, is a real germane one for you to discuss and, and provide direction to me and my staff tonight. So, again, just a reminder, we did this not out of any obligation, but we did it as an opportunity. We've already received quite a critique since the shelter-in-place order took effect at 10:00 PM on this past Sunday, so a couple of days ago, we've received critique on both sides, i.e. why we're not more vigorously enforcing the shelter-in-place. People who are concerned about the gathering of people in these outdoor seating areas, non-family members in close quarters. And we've also received some critique from some of the restaurateurs about why we're not being more liberal in our, our enforcement. So again, several good, good discussions, discussion topics for you on the agenda tonight, Mr. Mayor and council. But this one is really, as we, as we look at the short-term solution for outdoor seating, the short-term options, this one is really germane and I'm looking forward to your direction. We're happy to answer any questions. Thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Mayor. I'd recommend we go to Ms. Waffle now for the presentation.
Actually, Chip, with council's direction, maybe under the heading of meeting management, we'd do better to address this issue head-on right now and deal this separately. The other ones have more, less immediate relevancy given the fact that this order is till May, until January 11th. We meet again on, I think, the 4th and the 5th. So we're certainly going to have time to do other enforcement issues. I do, I would like to get this one issue out of the way first. Council, could I get your concurrence or any objections to that process? I'm getting some nods. Jeff? Okay. All right, let's, let's do that. So Chip, I think you've given the presentation pretty much. Let's take public testimony in this item, recognizing, I believe we already heard from one member of the public. But let's go ahead and open up for public comment. Britt, if you'd be the gatekeeper on that, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
This is, this is specific to immediate issue of continuing to allow the parklets to have seating in them, but with no tableside service at all. You simply, or pick up your food, go sit at the parklet or go sit somewhere else in town. But do we take those seats out? Do we order those seats to be removed? Or do we extend it even further and go ahead and have the platforms also removed? That's the issue before us. Okay, members of public.
Star six will unmute your device if you'd like to address the city council. And Mayor, I am just kind of dragging a little bit because of the delay for those who are watching the streaming and who have not called in yet.
This is Richard Kreitman.
Hey, Richard, go ahead.
Well, I think turning, allowing picnicking during this period, this phase one that we're dealing with, is an excellent idea. Legally, maybe, maybe the city declares them to be public parks for the, you know, taking back the responsibility. There is the insurance. Do the, do, does, does my friend Jack at Mulligan's next door continue to ensure this parklet if people choose to use it as picnic tables? Or does the city assume that? But I think it's, it is an excellent idea. And yeah, thank you.
Others wishing to speak?
This is Chris Campbell.
This is Michael Page.
Go ahead, Chris Campbell. Mike, Michael Page, you're on, you're on deck.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Just on this narrow issue, I, I really feel that the most important thing about this new order is that public gatherings be discouraged. And I think that allowing people to get takeout from restaurants and then sit down and eat it right there is exactly what we have now, although the restaurants will be less involved. So I urge you to think about how to do this. Maybe require the tables to be removed or prohibit the restaurants from allowing takeout to be consumed there. Maybe people could sit in the tables and chairs and wait for their takeout, which they would then take to the beach or Devendorf Park or home. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arriving, Mr. Page?
Hi, thank you. I just had a question. It seems to me that leaving the seating there is still going to violate the directive from the health department. Is, is that the case?
We'll answer public questions after the end of public testimony. So Chip, make note of that question from Michael. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Jack Galante.
Hi Jack, go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Happy holidays to all, first of all. Also, I just wanted to say, I just think that something that should be thought about is that allowing the tables to be left at the restaurants or would, really, is that going to make a, a great difference? I know that the ordinance is to not have gatherings, but is it safer overall for people to sit and eat their takeout food at these restaurants that already have distance, social distancing between the tables? Or to get, take it to an enclosed environment in a home or somewhere else where groups or, or friends may get together to consume the food? And it seems to me, in my opinion, that it's still safer on the outdoor issue. And, you know, of course, it does have to look at then, what do you do with the trash and all that and who is responsible for cleaning up and all of that? And those things have to be addressed, but it, it doesn't seem that it would be much more of a, you know, a problem. As a matter of fact, it'd probably be a little safer having people still eating in an outdoor environment. That's just my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jack.
Todd Fisher here.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I would highly encourage the council to allow the outdoor seating to continue with proper, the, the tables are properly spaced. In most cases, I see that the tables are properly spaced. I think the industry has taken a hit hard enough. Any, any hand up that we can get to get people to remember that we still have people that are working. And that we could, you know, provide a job for our staff, I think, would be critical and it will give that opportunity. Secondly, I think that the servers and staff that have been hit hardest, part of the, again, outdoor dining makes no sense to me. However, if that was the issue because a stripper was coming to the table and injecting into a new pod, that has been removed. That, that situation will have cured itself because no service will be allowed during this picnicking time. I think it allows, we, we've all invested in these parklets and these areas for people to dine in. I think that it's critical for the council to allow that to be, same as going to a park, to the beach. And allow, allow that for that to happen. So I very much appreciate the council. Happy holidays to all. I know it's a tough, tough place to be in. I appreciate each of you and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Todd.
Hi, it's David Fink.
Go ahead, David.
Hi, everyone. Happy holidays. What an incredible day it was in Carmel today. It was so beautiful. You wouldn't, you wouldn't know that we had a shelter in place. I had two friends in the last week shut their restaurant permanently in San Francisco. One had been in business for 22 years, the other for 19. Three friends in New York that closed their restaurants in the last month. Two in Chicago. We are getting crushed as an industry. We are getting hammered. There are so many people right on the edge of bankruptcy. And I don't know if those of you who aren't in the restaurant or hospitality business really, really get the depth of the suffering that's going through. I just furloughed 19 employees again. Not as many as Pebble Beach furloughed, but the pain that they're going through over Christmas is horrible. And anything, any city, Carmel, Monterey, PG, San Francisco, can do to help our team and help hospitality because we are in dire straits. And many of us, me, Pep, you know, some others have invested tens of thousands of dollars in these parklets. And if there's a way that they can be safely used under the shelter-in-place and that allows our teams to keep working and have some Christmas money for their families, you just don't know the pain that these families are going through. It is terrible. And I just want to, those are my comments today. It's a very sad time for us.
Thank you, David. Anybody else?
Hi, this is Gabriel Joris.
Okay, Gabriel, go ahead.
Hi, thank you. And happy holidays to everyone. Yeah, I would like to second what David just commented on. First of all, these are very, very difficult times for our industry. You know, I'm in, in the same position as well, having employed about 35 people last year and having approximately five of those people still employed with me at this time. But beyond the suffering that we're experiencing, I'd just like to address kind of the safety issue of the parklets. I've been following the science and listening to virologists speak about this issue. And from everything that I'm seeing, the transmission of COVID is primarily happening in people's homes in close quarters where they're not taking the same precautions that they are in public. You know, we've had no cases, almost statewide, any large outbreaks reported based on outdoor seating in restaurants. And I believe that that's because the restaurateurs and the other businesses take those very seriously and enforce the distancing, the masking as much as possible. I know that the city of Los Angeles just lost a case to the restaurateurs, you may have heard about, addressing this very thing, that the shutdown of outdoor spaces is not based on any scientifically rigorous information, but more of a gut feeling by our governor. And so I would just like to urge the council to allow at least some of our customers, but to be in the seats there. Whether it's a picnicking situation or not, at least the restaurateurs can still maintain some cleanliness and, and maintain social distancing, you know, from, from our distance as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else who would like to address the city council on this topic?
Hi, this is Ashley Wolf with Pangaea Grill.
Hey, Ashley, go ahead.
Hi, I also kind of wanted to kindly add to everyone's comments as well that this has been a really tough couple of months. A lot of people, I agree, are on the verge of bankruptcy, losing their businesses, letting a lot A lot of people, I agree, are on the verge of bankruptcy, losing their businesses, letting a lot of staff go. And from what I've also heard from numerous people in healthcare is that there is less than 1% of COVID victims receiving it from a restaurant. And with outdoor seating, it does provide a place for people to enjoy an outdoor area without going home and probably eating at home with five, 10 other people when you're not supposed to. Also, it's just bizarre to me how contradictory it is that you currently, right now, you can go inside of a clothing store. You can touch clothing, you can try on clothing, yet you can't picnic outside. So I also would really strongly support just the keeping of the outdoor seating for picnic space and let some of these workers in the hospitality industry make a little bit of money and not have to worry about not having a job this next couple of months. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. So anybody else?
Hello, can you hear me?
Hi, this is Lydia. Can you hear me?
There was a gentleman who started to speak. Who was that?
Yes, this is Bashar Smeh. Can you hear me?
Okay, well, go ahead and start with you and then Lydia, you're on deck.
Thank you. I don't, how do you unmute the same way you mute? Do you mute the same way?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, this, hello, this is Bashar Smeh, the owner of Porte Bella, Demetra Cafe and Catch Restaurant in Carmel. First of all, uh, thank you so much for being here and happy holidays, Merry Christmas, everyone. We appreciate all of your time and effort, uh, to make this community, uh, always, uh, in the best way possible. I, I will definitely also encourage the city council to approve the seating and the tables to remain outside. Um, it's exactly what Gabriel said about LA County losing the case, that there's no approval of outdoor dining is will increase, increasing the, the COVID cases. Um, and considering, you know, the financials and that all these restaurants gonna continue to pay rent during Christmas. We already lost the season of Christmas. We were, we were actually, all our restaurants, uh, booked reservations and now we, we went to zero. I think having some tables outside will always help, uh, some visitors, for daily visitors to, you know, encouraging them a little bit to dine, uh, to, to buy some food and any extra will help for us to just pay our rent and sustain. We're gonna have a rough winter. You're gonna see a lot of closure, permanently closing restaurants across the state. This winter is gonna be very tough, way tougher than April and May. I would, I would suggest that, uh, um, you know, to be like, to meet halfway. Like, instead of having all the tables that we have on the parklets, you know, like, let's say for every restaurant has 16 seats. Maybe we can put every other table, uh, have like halfway, so we have more social distancing where before it was six feet will have even more. And, uh, so less seating, less tables, but we keep, we remain some tables there. And in this case, I think you'll, you'll definitely guarantee that we, we way minimizing also the, uh, you know, the cases to spread and, uh, the restaurateurs will make some money. Thank you so much. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Lydia.
Yes, hi, everybody, and happy holidays to you. As a first time owner of Patisserie Bossier with my husband here, Giuliano, we would definitely like to agree with, uh, David and Gabriel and Ashley. We just, our poor staff, I can't tell you, I don't know, we have 12 employees and I think there's maybe three people that are, that are still able to work. But if we could just keep a to-go situation going where people can pick up their food and sit at table and be outside, very safe as the science, if you follow the science, it is way safer to be outside. Um, I'm definitely throwing my hat in the ring for that idea. I think it's the kind thing to do and I also think it's the safest thing to do. So that's all I wanted to say. Happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Mayor, I'm gonna start the timer just so that we give enough time, um, for the delay in case there's anybody out there who still wants to address you on the, on the topic. If you do want to address the council, please remember our six will unmute your device. Or the mute button on your phone.
Hello, this is Rich Pepe.
Hi, Rich, go ahead.
Oh, thank you so much. Um, yeah, I would, obviously, I would tend to agree with most of the callers here that we would like to be able to have some form of, uh, picnicking in the parklet, uh, allowed, uh, through this period. Uh, but I can make one suggestion. If by chance you do lean in that direction, I think it is very important for the council to lay out exactly what takeout actually means, a real definition. Uh, we're only two days into it and there's a variety of people still serving food in glasses and stemware and real plates, uh, going up to the tables and taking orders and or bringing, you know, filling up people's glasses with water and chatting it up with the customers in the parklet. Uh, this is not what the, uh, Board of Health, you know, wants to see. And, uh, and maybe even come down on us and insist that we not do this picnicking. I, I do not know what Monterey and PG and Seaside are doing at this moment, so I can't speak for those other towns. But, um, apparently there's a disconnect of what I might think the word takeout means and some of the other restaurateurs might think it means. If you go by the guidelines of specialty food, where you order and pay at the counter before your food is given to you and you take it away, I think that might be a starting point. Secondly, everything should be in disposables. And, uh, I, I think this is really where you're gonna get some trouble from people interpreting what, what, uh, takeout is. And maybe have it even where you have to be, I don't know. I, I just think that's gonna be tricky for you all to make that decision. But give us better guideline on what your definition of takeout is. That is considering the fact that you might even entertain this idea. But I wish you all the best and thank you so much.
Thank you, Pepe. Anybody else?
Hi, it's, um, Sarah Cook from Cafe Carmel. I just wanted to, um, agree with, uh, Rich, uh, Richard Pepe, who's just spoken, um, that, uh, about the definition of takeout and how that would work. Thanks.
Thank you. We're getting close to last call here and it's not 2:00 AM. Brad, what do you say?
I'm getting a little feedback on the phone. I just thought maybe they were going to speak, but I'm going to, nope, they just muted themselves. Uh, looks like we're okay.
All righty, then I'll close the public comment period regarding the use of the parklets, uh, during the timeout that we've got until the 11th of January and bring it back to council for questions and directions. Chip, I think you heard a couple of questions in there. Um, one is from Michael LaPage, who are we in violence, violation of the ordinance itself? The other being, uh, some definition of what is actually outdoor dining. Brian, are you trying to say something?
Uh, I was getting ready in case there was a question.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I think that, uh, one of Brian's associates ha- has written up, and that's what was sent to you, I think, and the answer for, for both of those, uh, both of those items that, that comes directly from the state order. But I, I just, I, if I, if I may, Mr. Mayor, I can answer the question. Um, just like the introduction of, of outdoor seating, we're the first to, uh, we're, you know, we're, 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 uh, cutting this ground, um, on the peninsula, uh, ourselves first. So Monterey and Pacific Grove have not crossed that bridge and, and I'm sure they'll be watching to see what we do and, and, and following in suit. Because we are the regional leaders, of course, uh, on these types of things. Um, I, I think that, uh, I think that it really is going to be important, um, to adequately define, uh, what, what takeout means. And again, Mr. Pyrex, uh, associate, um, has, uh, has a definition for that as well as, uh, the city attorney's perspective on whether this will violate the order. Um, you know, the, the, the most important thing to note about the order is that it's discouraging non-family members from gathering. So that's, again, that's, that's pretty much the key. So, uh, it, it's, it's, it's strangers sitting next to each other, whether they're in my house or they're in a park or, or they're exercising or they are, uh, sitting in an outdoor seating area, that the state order, and, uh, and again, it flows through the Monterey County order, is designed to keep people apart. So, um, please, uh, please, um, uh, uh, consider that in your deliberations. And I, and I really, I have to thank Mr. Galante. I think, again, the monitoring and the stewardship of these areas, uh, i- is very important, something you need to consider. Um, could, uh, could I get food from, uh, from one restaurant and then go sit in the, in the picnic area of, of another restaurant? Again, they're not proprietary, except for the fact that they were built by a particular restaurateur. But if they're gonna become, uh, kind of public seating areas, picnic areas, like a park, um, you know, how, how would that be viewed by, by the adjacent, um, private property or that's, that's built it? So a lot of questions, a lot of good comments. Um, thank you, public. Um, best of luck, council.
Thank you, Chip. Before I tee off for council questions, Brian, did you want to opine on the legality of what we're doing?
Yes, um, the order from the state and the county prohibit onsite consumption. And these parklets, as you know, were established to provide for outdoor seating. Um, and there were encroachment permits that were issued to the restaurants, uh, to basically expand their space, to allow for outdoor dining in the, in the spaces provided. So it's my opinion that that would be onsite consumption if, um, a, a customer were to take food from the restaurant and then go to sit at the table that's been set there by the, um, owner of the restaurant. Um, so that would be outdoor dining and unfortunately, um, certainly sympathetic to the concerns that the restaurants have expressed. But, um, my belief is that that would be outdoor dining, um, and, and that would be prohibited under the state and the county order. Um, I, I should add that, um, and I think there's been some reference to it in the comments that I've heard. If someone wanted to take the food and then go to a park and socially distance at a park and then eat their meal, uh, they could do that. But they cannot, uh, under the terms of the order, um, sit at these tables that have been established in the parklets.
All right. Any questions of Brian at this moment by council members? Jeff? You're muted, Jeff.
Thanks. I have a, I actually have a question for Chip. Um, Rich Pepe brought up the, brought up the statement that was pretty astounding to me that there are still people in parklets taking orders, like, uh, there's still staff going out to serve people that are sitting in parklets. Is that true?
Uh, I, I was out and about, uh, the last, oh, I'm sorry, sir. I was out and about the last two days and I did not observe that. I know that our code compliance coordinator, uh, Mr. Grundy, um, did visit a, a lot of restaurants today and, and received some, um, some heat-seeking missiles back, um, one of which was, uh, was, was sent to me. And then I, I thought it, uh, germinated to send on to council. Uh, Mr. Pepe is correct. Jeff is ri- is correct that people are using stemware. Um, I, uh, Councilmember Richards, uh, observed some of that last evening. Uh, so they're, they're using glasses and, and I guess real utensils instead of disposable utensils, which again, I, I think, um, is, is, uh, is, is tantamount to, to onsite service. Uh, when, when I think about, uh, uh, food to go, it, it comes in, uh, a prepackaged container of some kind. We do not allow, uh, polystyrene products in the village, so please don't go there. Uh, and then with some kinds of disposable utensils, whether it's spudware or, or bamboo or something. Uh, but not, um, a linen, uh, uh, napkin that's removed from the table or certainly stemware or glassware. That, that, that clearly, in my opinion, sir, um, violates the, um, uh, both the spirit and, and the language and the order.
Any other questions to Chip? Chip, so just trying to put a better definition on what would be the changes in outside dining. No heating, no service, no stemware, no actual interaction with the servers, the patrons. To David Fink's issue that somehow this would increase or return some of his employees, seems to me it would be only the takeout staff that would be there simply for the takeout, no additional tableside service.
Uh, y- yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if, 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 if that's your, if that's your intention, I would tend to agree with you. It would be the, uh, the personnel preparing the food, uh, not the servers, not the bus people. Um, not, not, I, not, I guess, the dishwashers, because you're not, I mean, they're washing the pots and pans, obviously, to prepare the food. But, but yeah, it would be a much more truncated, a much more, um, uh, much smaller staff. That, that would, again, if, if the council, uh, allows to go that way, um, that would be my, um, my interpretation and suggestion as well.
And do we have a peninsula mayor's meeting with, uh, Mary Adams' office this week? I think we do on Thursday, maybe?
Um, yes, sir. So District Five meets at nine on Thursdays. Uh, Supervisor, um, Adams, uh, meeting with, um, the city managers and mayors of the cities of, um, Monterey, Pacific Grove and Carmel.
Did you get a chance to hear from the managers of those two cities as to what they were doing?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, that's what I was saying before. Um, they're not doing anything. They're kind of waiting for our lead.
All right. There, you don't get, there's no, uh, there's always targets on your back when you're leading.
Well, again, we were the, we were the first to, to allow the outdoor seating. And again, we came up with a good format that's been copied by others, uh, for the temporary, um, outdoor seating areas. So, um, we, we, we take a lot of pride in it and, and again, we think it's worked out and we're, uh, we're, we're supportive. But again, I, I think the, in, in large part, the county is now, and the state has, have occupied the field, uh, you know, using the supremacy clause that, that, you know, these are, these are the conditions that are now being imposed on us and we're being forced to enforce it.
Karen, did you want to say something or ask a question?
That answered the question. Thank you.
Okay. Any other council members?
Oh, Mayor?
Bobby, yes, Bobby.
Yeah, so, um, you know, this is a tough, tough one today. And so this morning I did call the ABC to find out what their rules were surrounding this. And they basically said that they were gonna defer anything to the Health Department concerning this. And so then I was able to get ahold of somebody at the Health Department and I spoke with them about what they would like to see. And they said, it's not what they would like to see, that we should be not allowing group gathering, period. So the intent of their rule is to not allow anybody to sit outside and eat. They want people to get their food and take it home. They don't want them to go to the beach. They don't want them to go to the park. They want them to go in their car. They want them to go into their hotel room or they want to take it to their house. That's, that's what they want us to do. They're not, and they're not in favor whatsoever for, because I did use that point a lot. I fought pretty diff- I fought tough for it a year ago when this came about. Because of course, at that point, when I had the restaurant, I, I fought hard so that I could say, please, let me serve these people to-go boxes and they can take it out on the observation deck or wherever else. And they said, no, you cannot do it. And why, one of the reasons I fought so hard for that is because in March of 20 of this year, there was, we kept seeing pizza boxes and different things by our trash cans, knowing that people were grabbing pizzas to go and eating outside on the curb. And I didn't think that was very safe. And so I went ahead and used that argument again today with the Health Department. And they absolutely said, no, you are not to eat food on park benches, on, on any parklets of any sort. We want you to go home. It's, it's all about the safety of going home. And I understand where people could say, yeah, well, they're gonna go home and have a party of 10. That's true. But that, that's, that's not the city of Carmel's issue. The city of Carmel is keeping the residents safe. And so that's where, that was this morning when I talked to the Health Department and they had already had, and this was at about 11:45, and they had already had six calls of complaints about our city and the outdoor dining situation that happened on Monday. So, um, I'm sure I'll have more to say later, but I just wanted to give you that information.
So Bobby, if I might, did they offer anything as far as enforcement goes? What were their recommendations? Were they going to be providing the enforcing element?
They will not provide the enforcing element. Um, if there is a, a, a bigger issue from our, if our police department has an issue with a restaurant, then they will help with the DA. But they're not gonna come out, they don't have the, they don't have the manpower to come out and, and look at the, every, every restaurant or every one of these cities. They just don't have the manpower. So they're asking the police force to do it. And she asked me if I would please get together with the other cities and, as I'm a member of AMBAG, the Association of Monterey Bay Area Governments, I told her I promised I would bring that up at the next meeting where there's a representative- from every city and county there to get our police forces and sheriff departments all on the same page, is how we're going to handle this with, with people breaking the rules of whether they're dining outside or, or in these parklets, or whatever the rule may be that we come up with, that she would like it to be all the departments to issue the same citations, I guess.
Appreciate the offer as far as AMBAG goes, but I think that now falls on Councilwoman Forlito. Karen, aren't you our new rep to AMBAG?
Yes.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't know I was off AMBAG.
At the last meeting. Yeah. So Karen, you're, it's been a great, great first, first undertaking for you.
There you go.
Solve world hunger at the same time. All right. Well, this feels kind of like an unfunded mandate, which I'm used to having come down from the state on our heads. But, all right. Carrie?
I've got a question. I'm, I'm a little confused now, because according to Chip, the directive would be okay for taking food to the beach or to park areas. But according to Bobby, he somehow got the impression it wasn't. So I'm, I'm a little confused now. So help me out here.
Let me help you.
Chip?
Chip, did you want to, this is kind of a dual-pronged question.
Yeah.
Chip, why don't you pick it up and we'll go to Bobby?
Yeah, the, well, the, the, the order is silent about taking food to a park. I mean, again, it talks about, it talks about recreation and exercise. And it, it, you know, it recommends that you do it only with family members with a mask on. It's silent, it's silent on, on this notion of taking food to, to a public pla, a public park, public place and consuming it, I'm their council member. So, but I think, I think the information that Bobby received today, I'm sorry, Councilmember Richards, I apologize, sir, was subsequent to the order, obviously. So it's more contemporary information, I would say.
So what Bobby, yeah. So in your conversation with the Health Department, the impression you got was they wanted it to be stricter?
Yeah. Sorry for the confusion, Councilperson Tyce. Yes, what I, what I meant to say, or maybe what I wasn't clear on, was she doesn't, they don't want people going to the park. They don't want people sitting on the curb. They don't want people wandering around with food. They want people to get their food to go and go home. Or go to their hotel room, or I said, well, they're visitors. And she said, well, then they should go to their car. We don't want them eating in public. So that, now, now that's not their rule. That's what, what she said to me. That's what they want. Now, their rule is no gathering. And she felt that the parklets with, with seating is gathering. And I argued to the point of, but it's safer to be at a table than sitting on a curb. And she said, you don't get it. We don't want them on the curb, and we don't want them on the table. We want them to go home.
Brian, do you want to say something?
Well, the terms of the order read, nothing in this order prevents any number of persons from the same household from leaving their residence, lodging, or temporary accommodation as long as they do not engage in any interaction with or otherwise gather with any number of persons from any other household except as specifically permitted herein. And I read that to mean that they have not specifically in the order prohibited people from going to the park, going to the beach, or taking food to the park or to the beach. Now, in terms of the conversation that Bobby refers to, I believe that that may be, you know, additional information or request, a recommendation, you know, of, of, of not of a binding nature, because I haven't seen anything in writing that would require that. It may just be something that would be advisable in order to minimize potential for risk, but it's not in the terms of the order that I've seen.
And the intent of that order worked real well over Thanksgiving, obviously. All right. So council members? Possible direction? Jeff?
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. And special thanks to Bobby for the conversation with the Health Department. In reference to a couple of the comments that were made about, you know, we heard a lot of people comment on, about the economic well-being of their workers, and I think we're all very empathetic with, with that. We also heard some comments about outdoor eating is safer, and I think we all know that. But I don't think that that's, that's not the issue that's on the table. The issue that's on the table is what to do about this order, what to do about our parklets, given that the order prohibits outdoor seating. You know, the order is specifically, specifically closes outdoor seating. So in my mind, you know, I agree that it's safer to eat outdoors. I agree that it's safer to eat outdoors than go back with all, all sorts of people that you don't know to your house. But that's not the issue that we're deciding. We're not, I'm not an epidemiologist, and I don't think that, you know, as much as I agree with all those sentiments, I, I, I just have a hard time separating out our, you know, we are charged with sort of following the law here. And there are, you know, Chip referred, and, you know, I know that there was some incidents with Bo, and we're having some problems with restaurants that are still serving. And one caller, Chris Campbell, talked about maybe allowing people to wait for their food. And that, you know, even that, to me, just seems unenforceable, you know? We need to, you know, according to, you know, I agree with the sentiment that the Health Department and that Bobby have espoused, and we need to get people, we need to get them their food and get them away. This is a real serious problem. It's a, you know, it's two orders of magnitude worse than it was when we started here in April. And I think we should set a good example. I think we should not let people linger in the parklets. And I think we should, you know, my opinion right now is that we should, we should ask the owners to remove the furniture and, and go from there.
All right. Anybody else with an opinion? Karen?
Yes. I agree with what Councilman Barron said. The order is pretty clear. To-go means to-go. It did not say, get your food and go sit. It's, it, it is difficult decision here, but health and safety have to be the paramount issue. And that's the order we've been given by the Health Department, and I think we should follow that order.
Thank you, Karen. Carrie?
This is really difficult, especially being in the hospitality business. I think, I think I'm really conflicted on this, because I think it comes a time when we may need to push back a bit. I wish that our politicians and our leaders outside of Carmel would base this on data. And it feels like we're just doing the same thing, because we, we do not know what else to do. And I don't like that. And it is directly affecting me. It's affecting a lot of people in this town. And it, it, it is about health and safety. And, but it's, it's under a pretense that it's healthier to take your food, go inside and have a party than stay outside. And I mean, you know that's going to happen. The reason we have the problem right now is because of small or large gatherings inside that nobody can control. It is not because of the restaurants eating outside and serving food. It's not about hotels because of our safety measures and our cleaning protocols. We are not contributing to the, the spread of COVID. And you know what? I'm sorry to say that, but that's, I, sometimes we need to do some pushing back. And I, I, I don't think that allowing people to eat outside is the issue here. It's not. So I understand what my fellow council members are saying. But, you know, there comes a time when enough is enough. And I'm, I'm really at that point. I am really at that point.
Thank you, Karen. I hear you. Bobby?
Well, with that, Carrie, you'll be happy to know that with my conversation with the Health Department, I did encourage the person I spoke with to ask Dr. Moreno to help us open, help give us more guidance. I feel he's fairly silent. I feel that there's a lack of leadership there. And I expressed all of these feelings to that person, and hopefully she'll get that to him. I've already written letters. I've tried, at least I can speak for myself. I have tried, because I, I feel your sentiment. This is tough. Every person that was on this phone call today is, either I know them, or some are personal friends. And I feel for them, and I know what it was like to close a restaurant, and how, how difficult that was, and how difficult it is for the hotels. I'm, I'm well aware of that as well. And what our lifeblood is in this town, as far as the, the taxes that we collect and the attraction, for us to not have any restaurants open is painful, or not open, but for allowed to, to sit down. And this is just exasper, exacerbating by not allowing them to sit anywhere safely. Now we're asking them to sit on a park bench. And so i- it's a struggle for me. It was, this whole process has been a struggle for me. One of the things, though, I think that might be happening is, and we have to be conscious and aware of, is while people are waiting, this could happen very easily, and this is what I don't want to happen. And I don't want our police force or our code enforcement officer or our planning director to have to spend time on. And that is, while they're waiting for their to-go cheeseburger, they say, well, can, it's going to take 20 minutes? Can I have a beer? Sure, sit down, have a beer. Okay, well, why don't you put my cheeseburger on hold for a little while, and I'll have another beer? And then all of a sudden, somebody else comes. Now, all of a sudden, in one of these parklets, you got four people drinking beers, waiting for their cheeseburgers. And this is something that we have to be aware of or be conscious of with this next decision that we're going to make tonight concerning outdoor seating for the next three weeks. And I think it's, it's, it's been really tough for me. But at this point, I would have to ask our Public Safety Director, Chief Tomasi, what his feeling is on it. Because I think it's important for us to get his feedback, because if we do allow the picnic-type setting, it's going to take maintenance. It's going to take staff time. How much staff time is this going to take? And for, as I think, as the mayor said, the to-go situation is only going to employ the people that are making the food. It's not going to employ one more waiter, one more host, or hostess. It's not going to employ any of those people. It's only going to employ the back of the house and the person selling the food. So maybe Chief Tomasi, can you give us some information on, on what you feel this is going to take for you to, to look after people not ordering a drink while they wait for their cheeseburger?
And Paul, while you're at it, could you explain any other possible priorities you might have in the world of public safety? You are kind of the mask master and the enforcer on the beach for excessive gatherings. This is another slight obligation you'd be taking on, let alone just general public safety. How are you feeling about that?
Yeah, this is a tough one, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mayor, and Councilmember Richards. My heart goes out honestly to all of our businesses. Since this started, this has been painful to watch. Our, our restaurants and businesses are an integral part of our community, our village. But they are, we have to remember, they're a part of our village, and our residents are equally as important, as well as your employees who work here. We've spent, your employees have spent hundreds, if not thousands of hours, trying to manage the outdoor seating. It has been an extremely difficult task to undertake. As people find new ways of trying to circumvent rules and regulations, it's been a challenge. We, again, we've worked very hard to do this. We've worked very hard to get compliance. The Health Department, as Bobby spoke about, I speak to once or twice a week. I can relay, there is significant data. We do have data. I'll give you data. We are more than double our highest peak, which was in July, for our hospital beds being used. In July, we had 55 people hospitalized in this county. We're at about 130 right now. The reason this order went into place is to stop social gathering. If you allow these parklets to continue, and I apologize if I'm being frank, but this is how I'm going to be. If we continue to allow the parklets to continue, all you're doing is changing the container. You're not changing what's happening. You will still have people gathering, sitting, eating. You'll be violating this order and my interpretation of it and the Health Department's interpretation of it. We can't continue to have it. I can't enforce it. I cannot be, continue to have my staff chasing down every stemware, every fork, every person that looks like they might be serving somebody. It can't happen. I will tell you right now, you've had a number of employees who have been out of work because of COVID exposure, have had to go through decontamination process because of its potential exposure. We are on the brink of having a catastrophe with your public safety departments if this gets in our city. I will tell you right now, the county ambulance department is down 30% because of COVID exposure. Your Monterey County Dispatch Center just went to emergency dispatching because they have over 12 people infected with COVID in their departments. I spoke to you back in March, that if this gets into your public safety, we're at risk because we can't respond to the emergency calls that we have to. And if I continue to have my staff chasing down plastic cups, paper cups, glasses, and who's doing what, because everybody's pointing fingers about how this is going, you're going to start losing your employees. They're burned out, they're getting sick, and we're overly exposing them to a lot of people. And I would prefer if our Public Safety Department responded to emergencies and actual police calls rather than trying to enforce the county order. I have no problem having my people going out and educating, but the continual confrontation and arguments and honestly defiance that I'm seeing is putting them at risk. So I'm speaking on behalf of your staff. Please protect them. Let's get rid of the seating outside, so I don't have to respond to it and deal with it. Thank you.
Thank you for that impromptu con, conversation. Very well said. So let me just give me my take on this. You know, I, I don't want us to be the first person to step out of the box here and lead by bad example. We do have a meeting coming up on Thursday with Mary Adams and other mayors of the Peninsula. I think we need to get, if we get changed circumstances, if we get new definition, if we get more clarity on what this means and what the impacts are and the legality of it, that's one thing. But right now, I think we're in an awkward position as a municipality to be the leaders in this right now, when we go ahead and say, we're going to disregard a state order. Nobody sympathizes more than the industry, with the hospitality industry than perhaps Carrie, but I do, my wife being in the industry. But we both have connections to the industry, and we don't want to see this damaged any further. But on the other hand, what the chief just said about public safety is preeminent in my mind as, as an elected official in this jurisdiction. So I, I think we've got a sentiment here that we really shouldn't be changing or defying the state order or interpreting it in our own, with our own cavalier approach. But rather, let's get some clarity at the state level, let's get some additional clarity at the county level, and see if we, if there is a changed circumstance, we could always have an emergency meeting, special meeting to go ahead and take that into consideration. But I think right now, we have to go stay the course that we appear to be on by the majority of the council. Jeff?
Yeah, just some clarification, Mayor. So that means that we are going to give staff instructions to remove, ask the restaurateurs to remove the tables and chairs?
Yep. That's a formal motion.
I, I would defer to Chip, whether he needs a formal motion or not. I'm, I'm happy.
Yeah, you know, so thank, thank you, Mr. Barron. Yes, I would, I would appreciate it, and, and let's, let's do it by date certain. I mean...
Yeah, and I would like to, you know, I do empathize. I, I heard Councilmember Tyce's comments, and I really do, just to make this clear, I really do empathize with the hospitality industry, Carrie. But I do, and, you know, there's a, there's a problem here somewhere. You know, I think the chief of police sort of captured what the problem is. And I wanted to, Dave, with your permission, this is a picture... this is a picture I took of outdoor dining the day, two days before. So after the order had been closed, after the order had been issued, but before it took effect. You know, that was a picture of four unrelated couples having a very close quarter dinner at two tables that had been pulled together at one of our restaurants. And you know, it's really discouraging to see that downtown. It's just, you know, it's just straight on Ocean Avenue. Eight, you know, eight unrelated people squinched up at a table. And you know, a lot of people have said that there's no data. You know, and I admit, I don't know what the, you know, what the health, what the California Health Department or Dr. Moreno is doing, but they specifically forbid this. You know, we are in a buttload of trouble here. And it's this kind of thing, you know, that we see. It's just, it's just a bad example. It's just people just need to not be doing that. And that's why I agree that we, you know, it's just unfortunate everywhere that I guess people are not taking this very seriously and that we find ourselves in the situation that we're here, that we're in. But here we are. So it's very discouraging. So I would make a motion that we give, I guess that we give staff instructions to ask the restaurateurs to remove the tables and chairs and all of the other furniture from the parklets.
I'll second that.
Under clarification on the motion, Jeff. If there is new data that comes forward, if there's different, if there's clarity, further clarity about the order itself, would that include the ability for the council to hold a special meeting?
Sure, absolutely.
All right. Chip?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could we amend the motion, sir, to make it by, you know, 5:00 PM on Wednesday, the 16th of December? I mean, again, it shouldn't take a lot of time, but I don't want to, I think, I'm grateful for Chief Tomasi speaking so passionately. But let's just, let's put a day and a time down in this. And that way, we've got the council's backing.
I would. So on that, on the matter of the date, I would defer either to you, Chip, but I'm happy inserting a date into the motion. I would defer to either your recommendation of a date or the council's recommendation of a date. I'm happy to do tomorrow if the council thinks that that's appropriate.
Well, our meeting with Mary Adams is on the 17th, which is Thursday. But I don't know, I don't think there'd be any more clarity at that meeting. There may be some direction that we dispatch county staff on or something like that, but I don't think we're going to get any additional clarity. So Chip, what is your preference on a date then?
Close the business tomorrow, December 16th, sir, at 5:00 PM.
Yes, I'll amend the motion for that. Thank you.
Do we get a second of the motion? I'm sorry.
I do.
Karen, okay, and you'll accept that in the motion?
Yes.
Karen? Okay. Bobby?
When would we reopen?
The order ends on the 11th of January, sir.
So until the 11th or possibly longer?
Yes, I, to me, yes, thank you, Councilmember. I would assume that this would go until, you know, the, until the restriction on outdoor dining is lifted by the Health Department.
Until we're better in here.
Or via a special meeting based on new data or information? Okay. Carrie, did you want to say something? Okay, all right. All right, we have a motion. Wait a second. Chip, clarity?
Yes, thank you, clarity, Mr. Mayor. I won't be, I won't be lifting this even if data changes without your, without coming back to council.
Exactly. All right. Any other questions before I call a question? All right. Britt, roll a call, please.
Councilmember Barron?
Yes.
Felido?
Yes.
Tyce?
No.
Mayor Protan?
Yes, with much empathy, yes.
Mayor Potter?
Yes.
Passes with four yes votes with Councilmember Tyce voting no.
All righty. After that difficult lift, I'm sorry for that, but it's not easy being in this position these days. So Marnie, the floor is yours now. You had six, I believe, possible directional items that are no longer as urgent as they were before. But Chip?
Yes, real briefly, Mr. Mayor, I did want to, Chief Panholzer was with us, maybe still with us. So if there are safety questions, he's joined us. He's got a council meeting with one of his other cities in Monterey. But he can answer any questions that you may have as well.
Thank you. Marnie, are you prepping?
Yes, I am. Okay, can everyone see the presentation?
I believe so.
Okay. So a series of questions that we started talking about last week regarding outdoor seating, looking for some input. So the first question was, should temporary, the temporary outdoor seating program be extended? You know, all of these questions were crafted before the current shelter-in-place order was enacted. So, you know, these questions are thinking a little bit more over the next couple of months. Do we want to extend the outdoor seating program? The permits do expire on December 31st. How long do we want to extend the program for? And then if we do extend the program, should we start collecting some type of application fee or parking reservation fee to offset the cost of managing the program? And again, this is a very, this is for the short term. This would be just for the next couple of, couple of months. So we put together just a couple scenarios of what those fees would look like. Currently, a temporary encroachment permit is $210. It's a flat fee. We typically don't have encroachments that are temporary of this nature. So we looked at special event fees and construction parking fees and what that might cost. So the breakdown shows, you know, for one space a day, for one month, someone could pay, you know, $3,700 for their outdoor seating area. And over a three-month period, it could be $9,700 just for one parking space. So it does add up pretty quick under the special event fees. Construction parking is much more affordable for one parking space. A business would pay a little over $1,000, up to $3,100 between a one- and three-month period. So that just kind of gives you an idea based on our current fee structures, what that might look like. As you know, up until this point, all applications have been at no cost to the restaurants, wine tasting rooms, et cetera. Another question that's come up is, you know, what type of outdoor seating covers are appropriate as we enter into the winter months? There were a lot of different options presented. Aesthetics has been an important part of our program. And so looking for some feedback from the council on these different types of covers, from a pop-up canopy to flame-retardant tarps, to actual metal roofs, which would be more compatible with propane heaters. So looking for some guidance on that. And then also, the current program limits the number of seats to eight per parking space. With the introduction of these barriers, do we feel comfortable allowing more than eight seats per parking space? And if we do, how many? Another issue that's come up are hours of operation. So we're looking for some direction on whether there should be a standard closing time for outdoor seating. The table that you see here on the slide is not a comprehensive list. It just kind of gives you a sense for how the hours of operation vary among different restaurants in the central commercial district. So, you know, looking for some, for some feedback on that. If it should be just a uniform time across the board because it's outdoor seating. Enforcement, which we've talked about a little bit already, really has been a challenge. Our focus really has been more on the health and safety issues and just continuing to educate and inform regarding these items. So a couple of things that we're seeing, you know, occur on a more regular basis are just additional seats kind of showing up in the parklets, the seats not being six feet apart, propane tanks being left out overnight, which could be a serious safety issue. We've had heaters that are blocking sidewalks that are too close to buildings, awnings, umbrellas. A lot of the materials that are used with the parklets, they are combustible and we want to make sure that we keep them safe. And to that end, you know, some of these tents just aren't compatible with propane heaters. So looking for some ideas on enforcement. We had started with our three-strikes program. That was not much of a deterrent. And certainly, if we had continued on with that, many of the restaurants would have been facing revocation of their permits, which is not ultimately what we want. But we do want to keep these parklets safe. And then the last question speaks to the more long-term outlook for outdoor seating and what does that look like? We've talked a little bit over the past couple of months about, you know, whether to engage the Planning Commission and look at a more permanent program for outdoor dining. So just looking for some feedback on whether or not we're sort of at that juncture and we want to go ahead and start that conversation or if we want to wait maybe another month or two in light of the current order that we're under. And then we already addressed these two items. So with that, that concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marnie. Are there any questions by councilmembers of Marnie before I take this out to the public?
Yes.
I can't see because I'm still looking at the binder. So Karen, is that your handle?
Just for Felido, yes, sir, Mr. Barron.
Okay, good.
I have a series of questions. First of all, as far as the heating issues with the mushroom heaters and so on and forth, is that something that is inspected and enforced by our fire personnel?
I can answer that one, Mr. Mayor. And Ms. Felido was kind enough to share her questions with Marnie. And I believe it was yesterday morning, it was yesterday, Monday, Monday morning. And so I think these are really relevant questions, certainly. And they're good for the public to hear the answers as well. And so my answer was, again, Sichelle Young, who is our fire marshal, and again, Chief Panholzer can confirm this, has done inspections and I think routinely does sweeps of the village to look at the mushroom top heaters underneath the awnings or to ensure that they're installed safely and correctly, the storage of propane tanks. Obviously, again, Chief Tomasi spoke very passionately about the fact that Carmel PD has really helped out, especially in the mornings, to ensure that the outdoor seating areas are being stewarded safely. And then, of course, our own, our own staff in the Community Planning and Building Department do sweeps of this. I heard a stat today that Mr. Grundy's time, who's our co-compliance coordinator, since the pandemic, he has spent 75% of his time on outdoor seating. He does have a truncated schedule now, I'm not truncated, he's a modified schedule, so he works weekends. But to date, he's spent well over 1,000 hours just working with the restaurateurs on outdoor seating. So again, Councilmember Felido, that would be part of his routine in his regular review of the outdoor seating areas, if that answers your question, ma'am.
Well, I also wanted, if, can you hear me? I wanted to know if this conforms to the Monterey County Fire Regulations? And are we winging it on our own? Are?
Oh, no, ma'am. We're certainly not winging it. So again, and Chief Panholzer, he's on, he's on, he's on, so he can speak for himself, certainly, ma'am. But the Monterey Fire, which is our fire department, enforces the fire code. Our own building official enforces the building code, both of which have these safety considerations embedded in them. So again, it would be our own, our own team and we would not rely on Monterey County for any type of enforcement action. There's no separate set of rules that we would follow outside the building and fire codes.
Okay. And then, so I had a question about ADA accessibility to the parklets. Is this part of the requirement now? And if not, why not?
So, yes, and so there's another good question. The, our ADA czar, if you will, is Germaine Laurie, who's my acting building official. So he's responsible for all things related to the Americans with Disabilities Act. And, you know, I did not get a chance to speak with him today. I believe that the temporary nature of the current outdoor seating areas did not necessitate application of ADA, but certainly any permanent solution or any permanent application, if you will. Like the photographs that you saw from Montreal on Cai Principal in downtown Monterey would have to, would have to follow ADA standards.
Thank you.
Is that it for your several questions?
Yes.
Good, thank you. All right, anybody else? Jeff?
Yeah, I have a question, Chip. We talked about this, the enforcement of these rules on private property. How do, how does the city manage parklets that are in alleys or on terraces or in parking lots or whatever, where the property is not owned by the city? Do we have jurisdiction over that? Do we enforce table layouts or usage of tents? I know this kind of came up and what do we do right now? And just as importantly, I guess, what would you ask us to do, if anything, on this?
Yes, sir. So the answer, the direct answer to your, to your question, the overarching question, is that the city does have jurisdiction over, in fact, it's not just jurisdiction, it's obligation to enforce the state and county orders on outdoor seating areas on private property. Some of our restaurants have the benefit of having courtyards, small outdoor seating areas where they have previously approved outdoor seating through the use permit process, through the Planning Commission. Ms. Waffle has also taken to the Planning Commission recently several tented areas on the top of Vesuvio, tented areas in the Carmel Plaza. I know that Mr. An's property as well has an approved temporary tent, the 7D, Seventh and Dolores Steakhouse. So yes, sir, we have, and I believe they're all conditioned to follow the county standards for separation, distancing, wearing of masks and the obligation to follow the rules under the cloud of COVID. Does that answer your question, sir?
Yes, and I would ask, I don't know, to surprise this, I don't know, Brian's probably here somewhere. If I, I think if I say his name, he'll probably pop up. Yeah, there he is. There's his bookshelf. My question, Brian, I'm sorry that I didn't prep you with this. Karen asked, Councilmember Felido asked about ADA accessibility from, asked. Karen asked, Councilmember Felido asked about ADA accessibility from, asked Chip about ADA accessibility on the parklets. Is it, is it, do you have enough experience to know whether ADA is an issue with these temporary structures or not?
Well, I haven't done the engineering analysis of them to see whether they would or would not satisfy ADA requirements, but we can certainly look into that and get back to you all.
Well, I guess, I guess my question would be, are they, are these temporary structures subject to ADA requirements? Not, not what are the ADA requirements, but as a matter of law, should they, should they be accessible?
I think the answer there is yes. I mean, I don't, I haven't looked it up, but I'll just rely on my experience that I don't know of any reason why the ADA would not apply. These are facilities that are made available to the public and individuals that require special accommodations to gain access. There, there should be some effort to do that.
Jeff, to that question, I do know that very, several of these parklets have made very aggressive efforts to make sure they're ADA compliant. I can name probably half a dozen right now. So if there's some that are out there that are non-compliant, they should be brought into compliance. I'd agree.
Yeah, that's, we'll, we'll talk about, I guess we'll talk about that in a few minutes, but I wanted to get clarification on whether that was the law or not. Thank you.
Okay. Bobby?
Yeah, one, one other question, I guess this would fall for Chip or the chief. You mentioned the amount of hours that Beau has spent on these. And just for our own edification, also the restaurateurs and the residents, do you have a number of, you know, how many hours the police force have spent, the fire department has spent, and also Marnie, our planning director, has spent? Have any idea of what that has, has taken out of the city? And I'm not saying that I'm against it, I'm glad that we have done it. I'm definitely glad we've done it. But I think that everybody should know what this has cost.
Yes, sir, we, we have a part of that picture, and I agree with you. I'm, it's, it's been a worthwhile expenditure of, of our capacity. I, I believe that in my heart as your, as your city administrator. But Chief Tomasi and Ms. Waffle, again, did, did correspond today, so maybe we can turn to one of them for some of the stats they came up with. I, and Chief Panholzer's on, I don't know whether, whether he has any statistics on, on the compliance and the outreach efforts of Monterey Fire, but I would suggest we turn to them, sir.
Thank you.
Now, you're going to be on camera.
It's on to you.
Hi, council, thanks, Chip. You know, for the police department, it's a real hard number to come up with because it's part of our daily assignments. I've asked our officers to spend more time downtown patrolling. We've volunteered to help out the planning department with the enforcement, with the compliance checks. And it's safe to say three to four hours a day has been spent just on this alone. If you times that by the several months we've been doing this, it's, it's a significant number of hours. That does not include the number of calls we've gotten and responses we've had, nor the citations we've issued. And I can't give you a specific number of how many citations downtown we've issued because they're all kind of lumped under the same order. We've done 27 citations, as far as I'm aware of, in the city for code compliance issues. We have also probably had several hundred, if not more, calls of compliance issues where we've spent time educating, which has been our goal all along, is the educate, compliance through education. So it's hard to give an actual number of hours, but it's probably somewhere around 1,000 or more. And I think that goes the same for Beau, who's 75% of his day is spent doing the compliance checks throughout the downtown.
And for, and for reference, council, employee is, is paid for 2,080 hours annually. So in, in the PD, we have one-half of, of a full-time equivalent spent just on this, this topic. And then, of course, there's Mr. Grundy's time, Ms. Waffle's time. And I don't think, Marnie's still on the, Marnie's certainly still with us, but Marnie, do you have any perspective on how much time you've spent on, on the permitting of the outdoor seating areas?
You know, it, it is really difficult to, to calculate. It has been a significant amount of time and has certainly taken me away from, you know, other activities such as, you know, processing planning applications and assisting, you know, the other planners just with the day-to-day duties of the planning department. So it, it's really hard to say. It really has been the highest priority. So it has dominated my time for sure.
All right, any other questions?
Yes.
Bobby, are you done?
Yes, I was just saying, thank you, ma'am.
Okay. Karen?
Yes. Is there a requirement that businesses report to you if they have a COVID infection in one of their employees? Or do they report to the health department? Or do they report at all?
Chief Tomasi can speak to this council member, but contact tracing is done by Monterey County Health, not, not by the city.
Yeah, that's all I was going to add as well. It's contact tracing, and if we had contact, somewhere in the city would make it back to us, but there's no requirement for people to report, like a business, report that they have positive exposures.
Bobby?
Yeah, I can answer that because I just got notice. There's a new bill that just came out that restaurants do have to let all their employees know, let all their purveyors that have been in contact with that restaurant and this health department. So that, that's just a brand-new bill that just came out a couple days ago.
Okay, thank you.
So is there any other questions, staff, before I take out the public? Chip, I clarified at the last meeting that the ad hoc recommendation was actually to extend it not to April 30th, but maybe May 31st, was that right?
Yes, sir. It was, the, the goal was to get through the, the, the May holiday weekend, Memorial Day holiday weekend, sir. You're correct, sir. Thank you.
Okay, so before I open up this to public for comment, one of the areas, two of the areas, I'd like to see some focus from the public on. One is the enforcement aspect, and what are we going to do to fund that? I had Brian Pirik, our attorney, look into the fact that could we use some of the RID money to go ahead and fund that. Like, it was a short notice request, Brian, I think your jury may still be out on the use of that to some extent. But also, if there is a willingness to self-assess for some enforcement, because we cannot be able, as a county, as a city, be able to go ahead and afford this, this cost of enforcement. And obviously, it needs enforcing, but what are we going to do? The other issue is, we did get some concern about referring this to the planning commission versus continuing discussions at the ad hoc, perhaps opening the ad up from, ad hoc from an ad hoc committee to a standing committee, which would then subject us to the Brown Act rules, but would allow for public participation, a broader assembly, assemblage of people, and we would have public testimony, be much more of a formal structure, but would also allow for perhaps better direction than referring it to the planning commission at this time. I'm, it's something I'm open to, and I'd like to hear from the public on that, too, as far as what is their preference. The ad hoc has been very successful. We broaden it as needed. We broaden people at the request of some of the members, at request of some of the members of the public, and at the request of council members. But I do think perhaps a standing committee that would be subject to the open meeting rules would probably be a little bit more of a formal structure, be a little bit more regulatory, but it probably would provide better direction. I think there might be more comfort with the, the public, both the residents and the view, and the restaurant group, as we go into more of a definitive decision-making process. So that's just something I would like to put out there, but perhaps wasn't expressed well enough in the staff report. So that said, I'll open it up for public comment now. Is there any members of public who wish me to speak tonight? They have all left after the last decision.
Remember, star six will unmute your device. Sounds like we might have someone.
Parker Logan.
Okay, Parker, go ahead.
This has been an interesting meeting, and, and maybe no one's showing anyone enough appreciation over there. We all know you're working hard, and great, kudos to all of you. But bringing up the fees for special events or construction costs or parking spaces, I believe is irrelevant. If you just want us to show how grateful we should be that we're getting them for free, I mean, where, where does the parking fee for a global pandemic save our freaking businesses fall under order? If you're thinking about charging us to these spaces after making us put up all these things and jump through hoops to do them and take gigantic insurance policies out to protect all of your asses, I don't think that's very nice or very fair. I don't think you're going to see any positive feedback from anyone, but we do appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Parker. Anybody else? Rich Pepe.
Go ahead.
Oh, yes. Thank you so much, and I want to say, with, with all due respect to the planning commission idea to take it to the planning commission and to the current ad hoc committee who is also working very hard, brilliant people on both those commissions. I think Mayor Potter's idea of a standing committee, I, I support that wholeheartedly. Many times, restaurateurs get together, we had a little small meeting this morning with five or seven of us. And I think we all feel that there's a lot of people in the community, not only restaurant participants, but retailers and/or locals, residents, who might have some more boots-on-the-ground experience in, in these type of topics and offer just, you know, one or two little pieces of advice for, for the, for the council on this issue. So I fully support the standing committee, Mayor Potter. Thank you so much for that wonderful suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hello?
Yes.
Hi, this is Shaheen Alloimi. I just want to ask if the ordinances that were put into place by Ed Moreno and the city council and the California governor, are they law or are they just suggestions and guidelines?
All right, we'll take that under, question under submission. Brian Pirik will opine after the public comment period is closed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, this is Richard Kreitman.
Go ahead.
So as a resident business owner, I've been really grateful for these parklets and the outdoor dining during this previous period of the pandemic. We basically have three phases. Right now, with outdoor dining disallowed, second phase, going back to when outdoor dining was allowed, but indoor dining not allowed. And then a third phase, God willing, sometime next year, when restaurants can open up again. So we took care of the first one, and I, I appreciate you all taking a very difficult stand on it and, and, and your vote. I would have liked to have seen the picnic idea take hold, but from listening, it's not viable. When the current restrictions are lifted and revert back to the